See the ceiling, and I know I made it through the night. It's not inside of something.
All right, why don't we start until Veronica gets here? One, two, three, four, we can. Thank you for all coming, and thank you for coming for the zoning board appeal for town of Wareham for tonight's meeting, Wednesday, September 27, 2023. It is 6:30 PM. We're at the multi-service center. I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Ms. Devenese will be here soon. My far-right associate member, Mr. Forall, called Mr. Troy Lawson, our clerk, Mr. Jim Akabachi, Mr. Richard Sample to my left, Ms. Veronica Devenese just walked in, and myself, the chair, Nazir Akalasi, also present, our commissioner, Mr. Paul Turner, and our department assistant, Sonia Raposa. All right, very well. We have some meetings to do. For the meetings, for 9:13, 23.
I've reviewed them. They're fine as presented. I make a motion to approve as presented.
All right, we get a motion to grant to approve the minutes.
Aye, second.
Second by Mr. Sample. All in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jimmy?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
And myself, Nazir, aye. On the onset bay, for onset bay, somebody here from onset bay?
18 Green Street.
So what's the deal with this one? Town council asks to be authorized?
Oh, this is the council just, it went up to court.
It will get remanded to us?
And he found some, he found some, what he believes are errors, and he'd like to bring it back to us. So he's asking for us to authorize him to act on our behalf, to bring it back from the court for us to review.
Okay, very well. Okay, we have a motion to bring back for the 12-23, 12-23 onset bay LLC FKA Bodm Inc., 18 Green Street. We have a motion by town council, a motion by Mr. Akabachi to allow the remand for further review by the ZBA to correct errors. Do I have a second on that?
The motion is to authorize town council to act on our behalf.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. Motion, okay, very well, as I said.
I will second that.
Second by Mr. Sample. All in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Oh, I'm sorry. You said this is to allow town council to make the decision or to?
To remand it back to us.
Bring it back to us.
Aye.
Jimmy?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
And myself, Nazir, aye. So this is aye, okay, 12-23. Okay, on, on decision 11-23, Mr. Peter Kuluras, trustee for 3127 Cranberry Highway, there was some confusion with the vote, so we're gonna reopen the hearing quick and re-vote together the variance and the special permit.
All is one vote.
Right, but because we messed it up last time, we did it two separate times.
So do we have to move to reopen it?
Yes.
So move.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Yes, yes, can.
Ken Buckland, Director of Planning and Community Development.
Yes.
You don't have to reopen the hearing. You can take the action on the decision based on the record of the hearing you've already done.
Okay, just motion to grant, you mean, if we wish?
Yeah, exactly.
Very well, so, that being said.
All right. So on the motion, on the hearing that's already been voted, just to clarify the vote, I move to grant the variance and the special permit for applicant 11-23, Peter Kuluras, trustee.
As well as side plan. Okay, do I have a second on that?
Side plan.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Troy. All in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Abstain.
Okay, Jimmy?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Okay, that carries. Is the decision here? Okay.
Yeah, we can sign it right now.
Veronica, when you sign, just write abstain next to your name. Okay, 12-23.
So that's approve.
Veronica? Request for extension of a special permit for 50-2115 South Boulevard for Salvadore.
It's attached to our agenda, it's.
Is anyone here?
Yes.
Okay, councilor?
Hi, Attorney Morton, 184 Main Street. So this is the project that was out on South Boulevard. I also have on Zoom the petitioner, Amy Petoni's on here, and also Anthie's on here. If you have any specific questions for them, this was a project where we needed a special permit in order to extend, I believe, the garage. And there was also, in this past year, some other properties, actually, the director Butter that came before you and wanted to put several of the units. So we're in a position right now that the, we're looking for an extension. October 25th is the special permit. I have the decision too, if you want to take a look at it. I don't know if you have it there.
We have it.
Do they have it? Okay, excellent. So we're looking for another year, considering we're heading into fall, so as far as building this, there's been a couple other weather incidents too that's collapsed, like a side of the unit. So we're looking for that year to be able to have for this special permit.
What was the, what did we grant?
You just, it was a special permit for expanding, adding a larger garage and expanding the second story as an addition on the existing dwelling.
Oh, it's attached?
Yeah. Yeah, these are like South Boulevard, very close units.
It was a detached structure, this is the one at the end of South Boulevard, right on the corner of South Boulevard?
Not that one. We did that one too.
Okay.
That one was the one with the turret kind of, yeah, but there's, it's actually right behind there. And then there's another property you guys did, that was, I think, 12 South Boulevard. So they're all kind of revamping, but with this one, we're just looking for the ability to be able, some of the quotes we've got from contractors and whatnot have been all over the board as far as things, so we definitely don't want to lose this special permit. I know the client's working as hard as they can to try to get, you know, a good, good quote as far as building materials, and now the fact that it's, the whole side of kind of the extension has fell in, it's even more of a cost, so.
All right. I'm personally starting to have some negative feelings about extensions. I think two years is plenty, and it's a short time.
Is it two years or a year? How long's it been?
Special permit, two years.
Yeah.
And it's beyond the date by a couple days. October 25th is the date. Today's the 27th.
Oh, today's September.
Of September. We have a month. I always try to make sure it's before.
I just gained a month.
Let's not push forward in a fall, please.
I know, I, I will for this time, I will give six months. Start in the spring is fine, but we can't keep extending the special permit and keep them hanging. It's been one after, I know somebody in West Ham, we gave like three times. I am not comfortable with this anymore.
Mr. Chairman, I hear exactly what you're saying. I just want to say that there's some past precedent recently with giving a full year for other projects.
I know.
So I would, in this specific instance, this is a, they've owned this home for, it's been in the family, and in order to do right in this area, like we want it on set, we really need a year to be able to, we can't build when it's, or pave or anything when it's snow on the ground.
All right, how the board feel? Can I get a motion on that? Or how the board feel, discussion?
Discussion. So six months would, would mean they'd have to have their ducks in order by April. A year would give them until next, a year from October 25th. Is that the, is that the request?
Yep. Would you go, even if we had the extra time, early spring, I think would be a great assistance for us as far as the winter goes.
If I may, Mr. Chairman?
Sure, of course.
So, being in the business, I completely understand how things change. Some people come in, they give you an idea of what they're gonna do, and then they come down and look at it, and next thing you know, it gets ridiculous. And especially now, even though that COVID's supposed to be over, supply chain and labor and everything has been really difficult, so I'm, I'm for the extension.
Okay, very well.
I'm inclined to agree with Richard.
Veronica?
I agree that I don't like extending excessively. I think two years is a long time. However, I think Rick has a good point in terms of COVID still lingering and affecting, and there's been a lot of changes with the rates and different things, so I think.
Jim?
I'm, I hear consensus to let them have the year, so let's let them have the year. I was gonna say, let them come back in six months and we'll give them another six, but let's just do the year and get it over with, but make, send, telegraph a strong message if they come back looking for more time, we're not gonna be.
Okay, can we get a motion?
So moved, can, an extension for one year for 50-2115 South Boulevard.
For a second?
Second.
Second by Rich. All in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
And myself, Nazir, no. So it's 410, it carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, on the continued public hearing, 21-123 Angela McEwen for 386 Main Street. Okay, name for the record, I'm public hearing still open.
And we have some new plans?
Two.
You only need one idea.
I don't want the one with the posty.
You don't want the posty. There's one of these, there's one of these, one, two. I think it's just, we have lots of copies of this, or are there more than one thing?
I can start. Attorney Jillian Morton, 184 Main Street. The plans that are being passed out are the most up-to-date plans. I'm gonna let Sam from JC Engineering go into any of the details there. Last time we were here was two weeks ago, and we still needed to have some sort of approval from the fire department, so we do have that, so that should be in the record as well.
Where's that letter you have?
There's an email that went.
It went to all of us.
We also have it.
Okay.
You have it?
Yep.
Yep, okay. And the peer reviewer was here discussing just the site. So I think at this point, we're, I might shift it over to Sam, because if there's nuances in the plan that you can go through, just to refresh their memory on some of the things that needed to get tweaked.
Yeah, sure. For the record, Sam I'm Ali.
Before you go, there was some issues also with Major Allen also to be addressed?
I'm sorry, say that again.
With our consulting major and Allen?
A response letter to them?
Didn't they had some things?
We had.
The peer review.
We had responded to that peer review at the last meeting.
They hadn't responded, because they just got it.
They hadn't responded.
So.
Attempted to reach out, but hadn't heard any other comments.
And just to piggyback on that, I know through other several projects too, that he's out this week, so we don't necessarily have anything back from Phil on that stuff, so.
Okay.
But I believe the other was something regarding drainage and the landscape and whatnot there, so we don't have any firm definitive things from him, no. Okay, go ahead, Sam.
All right.
Yes, Sam I'm Ali with JC Engineering. So just to touch on a few of the comments we had discussed at the last meeting, one was, one being the landscape architect, which we had hired a landscape architect who came out, visited the site, and prepared a design that's catered to this development. We now have a page in our plan set that's specifically designated to landscaping, and it has been stamped and signed by the landscape architect, which is page six. We also got an initial review letter back from the Wareham Fire Department, which had essentially said that they were okay with the turnaround that we were proposing, however, they would like to see 20-foot-wide aisle widths. So we expanded the aisle widths within our subject property to 20 feet all around. And then as for the driveway leading from High Street up to our property, we were proposing 18 feet wide of pavement with a foot of compacted gravel on either side of the pavement, which would be kept clear for emergency access. We then sent a version of that plan along with an explanation of our modifications over back to the fire department, and they again responded with an email directed to Mr. Buckland, saying that our submittal meets all their requirements regarding fire access and that they have no additional comments.
Okay, so we're still waiting for Philip? Clean bill of health from him?
And when was that submitted, Sam?
The.
The day before the other hearing, right?
I believe it was the day of the hearing we had submitted, two weeks ago.
Okay.
This plan?
No, the response to the peer review.
Oh. When did, and when was this available to them?
This plan was submitted on Monday, or Tuesday, rather, yesterday.
Yesterday?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so they haven't had a chance to review it yet?
Okay, we'll wait for them until next hearing, before we go. Troy, you have anything, say, Veronica?
Nope, just looking at the landscaping. I'm just looking at the landscaping.
Okay, Jimmy? I'm good. Rich?
I'm just curious, I know that there was some talk over supplying some kind of trees on both sides of the road, or was that up to the other homeowners?
On the stone wall, on Main Street?
I thought we were, we had conversation about driveway coming in, the traffic, the people.
Yeah, putting some abreviations or selling some evergreens, yeah.
So I just didn't, I haven't seen in that sort of, I'm just curious if that was something that we were sticking to.
Yeah, we could condition that. Okay, and another thing, we're gonna, maybe some line of abreviations, giants along the driveway for like privacy and noise for the neighbors, the driveway from High Street. Can you include that in the plan for next time?
With that right-of-way being 20 feet wide and the fire department wanting a 20-foot-wide clear lane for emergency access, we, I mean, we'd be willing to work with the Butters there to plant some, to plant some abreviations.
How wide is that easement?
20 feet.
And the fire department wants 20 or 18?
20, 20 feet. That's why for constructability, we're proposing 18 of pavement with a foot of gravel on either side kept clear.
The 20-foot right, and they're using the whole 20, the only way they could put up abreviations is to put it on the neighbor's property, and, and we can't order that.
All right, can, that's something, maybe you could discuss with the neighbors if they like to plant them in our land if they wish. Yeah, we'll get to you, sir. Also, if that to be approved, we're gonna, we're gonna have to put some conditions on that stone wall, and it's gonna be very important that that stone wall, that stone wall has to be rectified. There's a lot of issues in there. Some trees gotta go, the wall has to be fixed, it's an accident waiting to happen.
Yeah, otherwise that parking lot out front's gonna go down onto Main Street.
Yeah, there have been, once in a while, every once in a while, a stone.
I thought there was discussion about putting the shrubs on that easement in terms of legality for ownership?
That's what we just talked about.
That's the problem.
No, I heard you.
They don't have the, the land. They only have 20 feet.
But I mean, even the easement, the road going in isn't specifically owned, right? Isn't that an easement going in?
The 20 feet is used. The fire department wants the whole 20 feet.
Talking about the ownership of the land, not the fire department and what they want. The ownership of the easement is by several landowners, which I'm saying, I thought that was discussed, that it creates, how do you legally put something there, like permit, like plant stuff?
It's an easement. Is it an easement to pass? Yeah, I'll get to you, sir.
Yeah, I think it'd be nice if the Butters, because I know they have counsel as well, to come up and, yeah, so let them, you know.
That's good.
Yeah.
You wanna come forward, please? They'll be here. That'll be good.
I'd like to specify, my name is Attorney Mark Duchesne from the office of Mark Duchesne in New Bedford, Massachusetts. I was engaged by the revocable trust on Monday to look at this. The recent plans were just posted dated, I think they dated September 25th. So I haven't had an opportunity to do an extensive examination of them, but quickly I did see some issues with that, but importantly, the issue that you have been talking about, this right-of-way, I'd like to point out that I, today, and I have audited the documents from the Plymouth Registry of Deeds, I chained the title back to the early 1920s, when it was owned by the Toby Estate. And the estate of Toby conveyed to Toby Hospital in 1939, the property that is the subject of the special permit application all the way to High Street.
Right.
That land, as it was carved out, there was a right to pass and repass to this parcel, the locus parcel, if you will, and there was also a right to pass and repass to the parcel that is currently owned by the Reed Revocable Trust, which was owned by Emma Fraser, who got the property from Toby Hospital back in the early 30s and 40s. And Mr. and Mrs. Robinson at 171 High Street, their property is carved out with a right-of-way. In the Louise Reed Irrevocable Trust, which I audited today, deed from Plymouth, as well as in the Robinson deed, they were granted a one-third interest in fee of that T right-of-way. I could not understand when I looked at the McGowan deed or the trust deed, it doesn't call out this parcel, it says together with a right, right-of-way. Chaining it back to 1939, I found the original deeds out, the original grants of easements, but in 1950, Toby Hospital granted the fee interest in one-third shares to the Reed parcel, to the Robertson parcel, and to the back parcel. That would raise a question of a technical merger of the dominant and servient estates, but it would also mean that any work in, I think, I didn't catch your name, Sam. Sam basically called it a driveway. People have called it a right-of-way. I think it's, I think it's a common driveway right now, and you have to have the interests of all the parties. That T abuts their property, their submission to this board is defective, they haven't shown all their fee interests that they own.
So you're trying, so that, another word, they're overburdening the access?
You got it. It is a total overburdening, and when you look at your zoning bylaw, residential uses in the WV2, it basically talks, you can have a family detached dwelling, you can have a two-family dwelling, you can have four in what you have existing, but you can't have any new structures without special permits. You really have a situation where you're going from four units plus Robinson and Reed, and you're now talking about generating 16 units, which would have 32 cars. When you look at trip generation, it would generate somewhere on the order of 200 vehicular trips a day back and forth. You have a serious question with overburdening, and right now, I think that is a very, very big issue that basically makes this way to get. When you initially started off in the March 1st, March 21st plan, there was access off Main Street, and what has happened over the course of the ensuing six months is nothing, these are not de minimis changes, these are major revisions to the site plan that call into question a more formal peer review. If this is a common driveway, is, there was talk by Sam of the adequacy of the turnaround. How are you gonna basically take a possibility, you tell me, most houses have two, if not three cars, but if we just go with what the, your town bylaw says, two parking spaces for each unit, 16 units?
Oh, excuse me, how are you coming up with 16?
It's 14, it's.
Well, it's four in the.
Go ahead, council, keep going.
Four in the main house?
Yeah.
And six, unless it changed again?
It's 10, it's 10.
Is it 10 now? Okay.
It's okay, keep going.
12, okay, you go down.
10 units.
24.
If I may, the counts, the traffic, all this, it's the only concern, it's the overburdening, and I'm glad you're here, which we had, I had asked the Butters before.
It's overburdening, but also these ideas of doing landscaping when a person has an ownership interest, and my clients are not amenable to that.
These are the icing on the cake, the most important, the overburdening, and I'm glad you're here, as I asked the neighbors, the Butters, there was a questions about this, and I did say to them before, unless you brings on otherwise, to explain otherwise that you have more rights on it and stuff, so I'm glad you're here, I'm glad you cleared it up.
Yeah.
Come back.
I would be happy, this is the first time I got to meeting, sir, happy to probably speak to opposing counsel about different options. I know he just got engaged on Monday, so, you know, I don't blame him for not knowing the amount of units, but you can have this, so we can discuss possible options. I also have the full title already, if you'd like to look at it, so.
Does your title?
It's a third, a third, a third.
You okay with what he's saying?
It's a question whether it's overburdening.
Or you agree that it's a third ownership?
I said that on.
Let's keep it to us, yeah.
So the question is, what's overburdening? The other thing is that we've talked from the very beginning that we're looking for separate units. By right, my client can, like everyone has said, put how many, 14 units in one big structure?
Right.
And this would be, not in front of you at all.
Let me, let me.
I understand.
If counsel is saying what he's saying is right, he's absolutely right, you're overburdening it right-of-way. You gotta go back to the drawing board and go for Main Street. There's absolutely no way you could overburden that right-of-way. That right-of-way was granted for four units in the back, for the Robertsons and for the Reed. There's no way you could overburden it now. We could, if we just, let's say the board say, you know, we're gonna give it to you, and you're gonna appeal, and the judge, counsel is gonna appeal, you're gonna lose in court. You know, I know, he knows it. I've been to court to cases like this, so you overburden it, and the judge gonna tell you use Main Street. Absolutely, on Main Street, you could use 14 units. Personally, we'll see what the board feels, with this evidence, with counselor, I, with right conscience, I cannot even grant you five units, not one extra unit to use that right-of-way. I thought you had the full right-of-way to yourself originally with the easement for it to your, to that property. Now, with new evidence showing, I can't take that chance and have the town sued and incur legal, legal fees to the town, and I know we're gonna lose, because apparently he's gonna sue us, and apparently we're gonna lose, and it's gonna cost our insurance, our deductible, the whole things. That being said, I'll run it by the board, see how they feel. Troy?
I agree with you.
Veronica?
I, I haven't sat with this type of thing and the overburdening, but it only makes sense to me that in this type of situation where zoning has changed, it was a long time ago when that easement was made, all of these lots are treated equally for the zoning change. It's not that one lot. It's not that one lot is different from the other two. If the other two wanted to expand, they could. So I don't see how overburdening would even apply. I do know that they're putting a lot more units, but if they wanted to, the other units, the other parcels could put them, but let's say that's not even...
An easement, when it's drafted, it's perpetuity. It's not like for long, 50 years, it's over.
No, I'm not saying that it's over, but it's, it's still related to these properties, correct?
Yes.
And the zoning of these properties has changed over time, regardless of what it said. It's still equally shared by the properties, but the property's zoning has changed. So I think, given that, and that they are treated equally within that zoning, I don't see how that would apply. The other thing is, because this one unit is increasing the amount of units that are there, possibly the maintenance of that road, the pavement on that road, those things could be considered, so that the brunt of, obviously, those improvements are done by the first lot to make an increase to meet the zoning, the new zoning changes.
Let me give you a small example.
Yeah.
Small example. If you have a road, a right-of-way to a 10-acre, 10 acres that you have a house on it, and back then, the zoning was 5,000, now it's 10, or now it's 30,000, and you had the right-of-way through some houses, so you could get like 10, 15 lots, but you can't do it, you're overburdening the easement, because you don't have the right 40 feet wide that the town requires. But we keep this to the legal people. Jimmy.
I think that, as we peel this onion, a new layer has been revealed, and I think that the two councils have had, not had the opportunity to represent their clients, and that we should continue, let the councils speak with each other. They may come back to us with a plan that would save us a lot of words. I have no comment either, in favor or opposed. At this point, I think we should continue.
I agree.
So, as Jim said, there's a new layer of this onion, and quite frankly, I'm not gonna be voting for any overburdening, but again, let's continue it, let the council talk it out, and report back.
Do you wanna?
That's what I would like to do.
Yeah, all right. I think that's the way to go. We have an extension from you for deadline?
Yeah, I wanna do that, and I'm just thinking, we might need more than a couple weeks.
Yeah. Just get the plans back, guys.
We'll come back in November?
Or end of October. Now, remember, November, Thanksgiving, we have one meeting only on the, on the 8th, we're not meeting on the 22nd. Right, right, Sonia?
Yeah.
Town Hall is closed, actually, on the 20, Town Hall is gonna be closed, so it's gotta be November 8th or October 25th.
Yeah. Could we just put it for the 11th, and then if I need to continue it?
November 11?
Yeah, I'm not here on the 25th, so...
Okay, you guys could discuss it.
Yeah, if we don't have time to...
I'm confused, was it November or October? I thought it was October 11th.
October 11th.
She wants October.
Is that okay? It's a Wednesday?
You can always come back on the 11th and say, we need more time, we're talking, but we're not done talking.
I get you.
November 11th is a sad...
October. October 11, I'm not here, so we have four board members. You have the right to have five, so I don't know which...
It's the first week in November? Is that better?
8th of November.
8.
The first week in November.
November 8.
Yeah, November 8th, okay.
8.
November 8th, yeah, but we don't have the one on Thanksgiving Day.
Thursday's closed, Veteran Day, but the 8th, it's open. So the 8th is good. So counsel, we need an extension from you for deadline, for time?
Yes.
Until, why don't you give it till the 20, the 23rd? Let's go.
December?
Yeah.
Cause you're not having a second meeting?
Give it till December 14th. And we'll continue till November 8th. Okay, counsel?
Yes, it is, thank you.
Before we go forward, anyone else in the public want to speak on this matter? No, very well. Okay, that being said, can we get a motion?
So moved.
Okay, we got a motion to continue 20-23 until November 8, 2023, by Jimmy. Do I have a second?
Second, go ahead.
Second by Troy. All in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
And myself, Nazir, I will see you on November 8th. Thank you.
And what was the deadline? I didn't, did you move it out to December?
14.
14.
December 14th is the deadline. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, counsel.
Thank you, Mike. Appreciate it.
How far did he go?
50 years.
Guys, you want those plans, or you wanna give me that?
We have the one-third.
Yeah, it's in 1939. That's why it's missing.
Thank you.
I, um...
Okay, 31 dash, wanna take it outside, please? 31 dash 23, and Warren, 176 Main Street, QQZBLLC, 176 Main Street.
Geez, Attorney Morton, we oughta be getting you a name plaque, there's for, seems like you're a permanent fixture in that seat.
Yeah, yeah. All right.
Very well. Okay.
All right.
Okay, public hearing still open, your name for the record?
We'll introduce everyone, Attorney Jillian Warren.
Phil Warren, D.R. Warren at DePrazes.
Neil Silva with 85 Studio.
I have some architectural, the elevations, they're part of the plan set.
They have it?
What's that?
Do they have that?
We just received this, I don't believe, but...
We don't have it.
No, let's give them the renderings, see.
The renderings are not, the renderings are not with that set, so...
Let's pass those out.
Anything, yeah.
We got new plans, some ones I just passed.
Thank you.
Same plan date, we have architectures.
I just included the architectures.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, so if you all recall, this is the site at 176 Main Street. This is a project where we're looking to redevelop this site and create a great retrocade there. We have, we heard you loud and clear last, last time about, you know, the architecture and how the Main Street should look, the planting specifically, you'll see that there's a schedule, a planting schedule, that specifies the type of plants and everything there. But we wanted to have, we have our architect here, so then we can kind of talk of that, talk about that, as that's a specific hot topic here on Main Street now, so. Do you wanna take it?
Sure.
Yeah, all right.
Yeah, that looks good.
Yeah, it looks, it's great.
Mr. Warren, what's wrong with that?
That's, that's great.
It's great.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, so, once again, Neil Silva with 85 Studio. I had attended, at least virtually, last meeting, kind of following along, and it sounded as, you know, there were these design guidelines that were passed, I guess, after the initial application here. And so I know, in working with Phil, you know, the idea to try and align the exterior of the building more with, you know, what these guidelines are sort of setting out to do. As of right now, you know, we have that large stone facade in the front, and to the right, currently, with an existing sort of shingle that's sort of in disrepair, and then followed around by, you know, this red clapboard, you know? So what we're currently sort of proposing would be, you know, removing the shingles, you know, continuing just this uniform look of clapboard. I know Phil sort of grabbed inspiration from the Seven Gables House in Salem, and trying to, you know, apply more of a, you know, traditional New England vernacular to the building itself, focusing more on kind of a gray tone, which I think mimics and becomes a little more compatible with some of the surrounding buildings, but, you know, emphasizing that with more of a dark charcoal trim, you know, having some sort of wood carved logo signature sort of against that stone veneer that's there now. You know, one of the biggest things that we started to focus on was, you know, entrance, and how you're kind of pulled in from the street. So right now, currently, there's sort of this classical white, you know, entrance trim that we'd essentially remove, creating kind of new gable that sort of echoes the gables that are there now, you know, sort of flanking each side of the door with, you know, maybe this traditional sort of lantern-type fixture, and looking for other opportunities perhaps with that wood carving on the main facade of the stone, you know, potentially to have some sort of light, you know, behind it, or perhaps, you know, either some uplighting or maybe a gooseneck-type, you know, lighting just on that main architectural feature, which kind of separates at least this building from, you know, others within sort of that Wareham Village. And so we just kind of developed these sort of renderings based on, you know, what we had sort of read through, trying to create more of that human scale to the building, so having some more horizontal sort of trim work to kind of, you know, bring more of a street-level perspective to the building. I know especially currently now, that gable end on the right side of the building is just all clapboard from ground to peak. So again, you know, I know we're gonna have parking throughout the site, but potentially having sort of this new entryway that will draw you in. I know the plantings would essentially get lowered, we'd kind of take some of those out, create something more, you know, with more curb appeal. That would also sort of invite pedestrians and, you know, just the visual eye as you're driving past, to actually see the building, see the logo, and not just, you know, these huge sort of dark plantings that are there now.
Mr. Madden, these elevations accurate? These are...
These elevations?
The elevations on your site plan.
On my site plan?
The grade elevation.
The grade. Is this like, I'm reading right, like 10 and 12, the parking lot? Am I reading right?
He's looking at the topos.
The topo?
No, the elevations, yes, it's accurate, and it's a recent survey that indicates those elevations.
Mr., I didn't get your name, Mr. Architect?
Neil Silva.
Neil. What's the plan for the basement?
So the basement, because of the overall cost of construction, for the most part, the work is primarily gonna be on the first floor and that sort of back section, leaving most of the existing basement sort of, or lower level intact, you know, storage or...
Not that it's out of jurisdiction, but it depends how much money you're spending, you might have to comply with flood, cause that's a flood thing, so electric pounds and stuff there and everything else.
Yeah, and that's why I...
To give you a heads up, you're gonna have to remove them, and you can't have an assembly there at all. Storage, I believe Commissioner, can he have storage? Storage, yeah, but everything else, electric plugs has to be above flood, all these things, lighting, everything else. So you are aware of this, very well. All right, Troy?
I'm good.
Veronica?
I have no comment, I like it.
Jimmy?
Looking good, keep going.
Rich?
No comment.
Anyone on the public, in favor or against? What, Alan Major, Mr. Madden, did you, did you have anything from Philip, from, that you addressed? Are we all sat with them?
We provided, we provided him with the letter, we have not heard back. He's on vacation this week. But one thing I would, we did talk about some landscaping, you know, we're seeking a variance for the landscaping, lack of buffer on the site, but we have, Philip did engage a landscape architect, gave us some ideas of what we could do to enhance the landscape features on the site. So essentially, we read out the front of Main Street. The discussion with them was, if we go in there and you trim down the plant material that's currently there, we pull out the unsuitable material, the invasive types of things, and then supplement, supplement it with some additional plantings in the form of like ornamental grasses that are rather large in that area, that that would, that would bring out some of the feature of the landscape that exists in the front. The thought was, is that proper maintenance of the unmaintained landscape feature now will yield something a little nicer than what has customarily existed there. Additionally, we come around the front of the building, just immediately in the front, I believe all that material will be removed, you know, and replaced with other material that's very similar in nature. I think it's predominantly rhododendrons in the front, a couple of trees, so they're gonna go with smaller material that the rendering, that was prepared, the architectural rendering that was repaired, it gives you, gives you the scale of what we're looking at. Right now, the building, I mean, the landscape feature goes right up, halfway up the height of the building, so we want smaller things, a couple of benches to sit, trees, planting with some annuals, and on the back side, in this corner right here, I think we had a little discussion about hopefully trying to improve things in that corner, and there's a number of plants that we're proposing to place there, as well as a, like a stream bed type riverstone feature. No water in it, but just the dry riverstone type of landscape feature there. So that's what was, that's what we thought about doing to enhance the landscape there. The back side, the slope, for now, we're just gonna leave that the way it is. It is vegetated, it is stabilized, and I think as time goes on, they may just plant other types of material on that slope, and I don't think it warrants any, any permitting in that regard, but, you know, the thoughts are, is that we'll enhance that as time progresses in that, in that area, improve the overall look of this, look of the site. And that was really all we have done since we met two weeks ago.
Okay.
I will add, I think, I don't know if I ended up on the plan, but there's a privacy tree that the landscape architect had recommended in the back corner behind the patio. It's an evergreen, I forget the specific species. As far as the front, we were gonna come in with four-foot-tall Cunningham rhododendrons. In between those, there're gonna be winter berries, in front of that, there's some cone flowers, he told me it should have year-round color for Main Street.
Nice.
And there'll be a weeping cherry tree to the left with the benches and some Japanese river grasses.
Cool. All right, so nothing from Alan Major? What's the wishes, the board?
Well, personally, I'd like to tell them to just go to work, but I think we're kind of forced to wait to hear from our peer review, aren't we?
Supposed to, yeah.
So, I mean, I guess we could just say we don't need to hear from them and tell them, yeah, sure, go. But I'm sure that there's other members of the board that probably wouldn't be so quick to say, yeah, sure, let's go.
Do you mind coming next time?
Can we preliminary vote on the variance piece?
We can.
And then hold the site plan?
We can.
Okay. Yes, then I would like to...
All right, that being said, let's close that portion, and...
We might have, we might have.
Oh, yes. They didn't pull a permit yet, what are you here for?
Altitude.
All right.
George Stewart?
Yeah.
60 High Street. Only, I couldn't see the plan from back there. I live right behind him, and I'm just worried about the landscape buffer between the residential and the commercial.
The buffer in the back?
Yep.
And how, Bill, how much, how much of a buffer? Isn't behind the slope where George you live?
Rear propelling line, is that what we're talking about, George?
Yeah, your rear propelling, yep.
Yeah, this rear propelling, looks to be in the order magnitude, I don't know, I don't have a scale with me, but it's a 10-scale drawing, it's a couple of, three inches, it's about 30 feet to the toe of the slope that exists there now, and I believe the landscape buffer in that area would be like 10. That is the only area where we're able to achieve a landscape buffer. Currently, there's a stone wall that's shown on the top, on the top of that slope, and the landscape buffer would extend, I think, 10 feet and 10, I think it's 10 and 10 in the...
But you have like 30, almost.
We have, we have...
Something about adding bushes later, I just...
No, we're talking, I was referring to planting on the, on the slope itself, not at the top, as, as far, part of a landscape buffer, more just a... of a landscape buffer, more just a landscape feature on the slope.
I'm all for the business, I just-
Hey, if you guys want to have a nice conversation, you can take it out in the hall, but if you'd like to talk to us, it's probably nice of you to be looking at us.
I just want to-
I know, you're talking to him, and we're all sitting here like-
The noise of the machines is what I'm worried about.
Are you talking to us or him?
The what, George?
The noise of the machines going up the hill, that's what I'm worried about. Needs something-
The noise of the machines?
Arcade thing.
Yeah, yeah. Have you ever gone down to Buzzers Bay into that establishment?
What's, hold on, what's the arcade? Mr. Warren, what's the arcade? What do you have, machine?
The business is, it's a two-level business. The upper level is a themed restaurant, the lower level in the rear has vintage arcade machines from the 80s and 90s.
Pinball.
Are they inside?
So, let's think pinball. Yeah, they're inside, yes, they're inside.
Okay. George, you think it'll have noise through the walls? If the windows open, maybe?
By law, there's a 20-foot landscape buffer, just want to know if it's going to be there.
Well, they have like 30. You're going to have to probably put some more vegetation on that hill, so we really have some buffer.
That's the wish of the board?
It's all the business.
Yeah, just keep it to us. Sir, keep it to us.
I was going to tell them that, I was going to ask-
No, they can't tell them, you got to tell us, not him. All right, so maybe some giant arbivides, regular arbivides, stagger?
Just so that you know, the slope begins at the toe of the stone wall up there, so there's not a five-foot flat area to plant material, but it can be planted on the slope.
They do sound to make them happy for the neighbors.
What about the smaller plantings that are at, like mine at Forest, the smaller shrubs that kind of go up the back hill?
Well, they're not going to be like a buffer, that's what the neighbors concern.
He's looking for, he's looking for a fence made out of bushes.
Basically.
That's what he's looking, am I wrong, sir?
I think it's more of a sound control.
Am I misinterpreting what you're looking for?
Sound control, bushes, fence.
Yeah, bushes, bushes is a good idea, exactly how Jerry described it.
I will say it's not on the plan, but that's exactly my intention, was to go back there with arbivides.
Yes.
I couldn't see the plan from set-back there, so I was-
I hear. All right, so maybe we'll do a line of giant arbivides, somehow stabilize them on top of the hill and give the neighbors some privacy and noise reduction. Yeah, thank you, George.
Five to six footers, every six to seven feet or something like that?
Yeah, every six feet, a couple of years, they'll be touching.
That's fine, the next revision will include that.
All right, very well. Anyone else in the public? Okay, that being said, so next time, we need-
We need to continue to, when's the guy going to be back from vacation?
I believe he was returning Friday.
Yeah, can we vote on the variance?
Yes, we will.
And then October 11th, is that what the next one is?
But just to make, I'm not going to be here 11, you have enough board member, everybody on board apparently, we'll do the variance now. Just make sure you hush out the issues with Alan, Major, Philip, and you put the arbivides, and what else we talked about?
What's the variance for?
The setback, the landscape.
Landscape buffer?
Landscape buffer, on the sides.
Just on the sidelines.
Okay, okay.
Well, there's no landscaping now because they changed-
But we're going to-
They need a-
They just want to straw vote tonight, or you want us to vote?
No, no, we'll vote on the variance.
More straw votes.
I just, earlier tonight, we had to revote on something because they, so I didn't know if we were going to vote-
Form a vote, please.
Vote on it tonight and then in a month or two, vote on it again, or?
We'll vote tonight. This one, there was some discrepancy. All right, on that portion, why don't we close that section, the portion of the variance? Let's close the portion of the variance.
So, as far as the public portion of this, anything pertaining to the variance, I make a motion that we close any public discussion regarding the variance.
Okay, do I have a second on that?
I'll second.
Second by Veronica. All in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
And myself, aye.
Okay, now that it's closed, I'd vote that we grant the variance as requested.
Okay, we have a motion to grant the variance as requested by Jim. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Yes, based on the site review, yes.
The variance, yes or no on the variance? Has nothing to do with site review.
Okay, yes, yes.
Jimmy?
Yep.
Richard?
Yay.
And myself, yes.
Fine, sir.
And very pleased, note that I meet statutory requirement of MGL 4A, Section 10.
A special permit is open to the board and to the public for further discussion.
Right.
And that's what we're waiting for the site.
Come back on the 11th and-
So, you want to come back on the 11th? Okay. Can we have a motion to continue? Which one is this one? 31-23, we have a motion to continue 31-23, Warren, 176 Main Street, till October 11th. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Rich, all in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
And myself, Nazi aye, and hopefully next time, you guys wrap it up on your own way. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
Welcome.
All right, 33-23, Cooper, 11 Lake Ave.
I need to stand up once in a while. Thanks very much, have a good night.
Anyone here for Mr. Cooper, for 11 Lake Ave? 33-23, William Cooper? Or any neighbor from Mr. Cooper? Which one is Lake Ave?
William Cooper, 11 Lake Avenue. It's continued, did we?
Oh, sorry, let's see, what was that? Was that the dock?
It was continued to 927, is what I thought. Oh, that Lake was the guy who wanted to put the addition with the separate pot, and you said you can connect.
Yes, yes, and he's going to make a-
They were going to change it from a two-family to a single family, and did they get the night wrong or something? They're not here?
No, I guess they took your advice and they're going to make it better house.
So, they don't even need us?
Well, they should show up and let us know.
Well, this just can expire, or we can-
It's a variance, let's close without prejudice. Let's deny without prejudice. Okay, let's, on that more, public hearing still open, can we have a motion to close?
So moved.
We have a motion to close by Rich for 33-23, for William Cooper, 11 Lake Ave. Do I have a second?
Yes, seconded.
Second by Jim, all in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
And myself, Nazi aye. On that motion?
What we want to do, deny without prejudice?
Deny without prejudice.
So moved.
Do I have a second on that motion? I'll second. All in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Aye.
Jim, aye. Rich?
Aye.
And myself, Nazi aye, so it's deny without prejudice.
So, if they need to, they can come back, but if they don't need us, they don't need us.
Okay, very well.
Now, we've got Schoolhouse Rocks, I think.
The Schoolhouse, I guess, the counselor?
Yes, my partner had to leave this way back, so I forget if I can get pushed to the end.
That's not a problem.
We'll shove you all around, yeah.
We'll table-
We'll kick you right out of here.
We'll table it to the end. Public hearing, 36-23, David Reagan, special permit and/or variance for 34 Briarwood Drive.
Did we skip one?
Yeah, we're just going to table 35-23.
Table, schoolhouse. Just 37, 38, oh, it's just-
36-23, Mr. Reagan.
No, no, they just weren't great, usually everything's ruthlessly in order in those one. 36 came behind 37, I was so confused. We need to read this one? 36-23?
Yes, that's a red note here.
Okay, let me hand these out.
What do you want for their name? Oh, glossy.
Wait a minute, personalized, they have these sample.
Why?
Oh, that doesn't really matter.
Why would they be personalized?
Personalized, because they're all different.
They should all be the same.
No, no, no.
Shouldn't matter.
You got to, what difference does it make, she says? Okay, the zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on September 27th, 2023, at 6:80 PM, in room 320 of the Wareham Multi Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. To consider petition number 36-23 for a special permit and/or a variance from the requirements of Article 6, Table 620, and Article 13, Sections 1352 and 1353, under the Wareham zoning bylaws to David Reagan of 34 Briarwood Drive, Care of Grady Consulting LLC of 71 Evergreen Street, Kingston, Mass., proposing to construct an attached two-car garage located at 34 Briarwood Drive, Wareham, Mass. That appears on Wareham Assessors Map 53, Lot 211, in the MR30 zoning district.
Okay, you name another, sir, for the record?
Good evening, I'm Dylan Brady with Grady Consulting, here to represent David Reagan, the applicant, requesting a variance.
Okay, do you have two-by-three plans, bigger plans than that? Or this is the-
The 24 by 36.
Yeah, but you don't have one for the board? I'm having a hard time reading, I'll look online, keep going, tell us what you're doing.
Okay. So, the applicant is proposing an attached 24 by 26 garage in the south part of the property there. The red dash line is the building envelope, existing on-site, there is a dwelling and also an accessory structure, both are pre-existing non-conforming. The existing front setback to the dwelling is 13.9 feet, and the existing setback, the accessory building is closer to the side lot line, and the existing setback to that is 3.6 feet. The proposed garage is not proposing anything closer than that accessory structure on the side, the side setback is going to be 6.6 feet, and then the front setback is increasing from 13.2 to 13.7, so it's a .7-foot increase on the front setback. And we are requesting a variance based on, we're meeting the four requirements of MGL Chapter 40A, Section 10, as the following. One, that owning circumstances related to soil conditions shape or topography of the lot would create a substantial hardship on the petitioner, whereas in this case, the blue line represents a salt marsh surrounding the property, with the middle green line representing the 50-foot wetland buffer zone. So, through conservation, that is the furthest area we can put attached garage without going within the 50-foot buffer. Also, that purple line represents the 200-foot outer riparian zone in relation to the Winarack River. So, due to conservation, we have put the proposed garage as far away as possible. And then B, the variance may be granted on detriment to the public good. The proposed garage, again, like I said, is not going any closer to the side setback than the existing accessory structure, and is only encroaching further on the front setback by .7 feet, so it's very minimal, so that wouldn't cause any detriment to the public good. The variance may be granted without nullifying or substantially degradating from the intent of the purpose of their zoning bylaws. Again, like I said before, we're not encroaching any significant amount further than the existing structures on the lot. And then D, uniqueness, which again, which is a result of the topography of the lot being the wetlands surrounding the lot completely, and the salt marsh and the river. Yeah, so with that, I would like to open up any questions you may have about the project.
Thank you. Commissioner, on that garage being in the velocity, it has to comply with FEMA? Commissioner?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm just sneaking.
I can smell a rubber burning. Bless you.
If it is in the velocity zone-
It is an 18 VE 18. You are, Mr., what's your name again, sir?
Dylan.
Dylan?
Dylan Brady, yes.
Okay, you're aware you're in the velocity zone, and there's some rule and regs to how you're going to have to build that garage, right?
Correct, yep.
Lower panel, the whole nine-yard structure, all that?
Yes, yep, and we already approved by conservation as well, as well.
Yeah, yeah, but conservation is not building department. What's the cost of building that garage?
I don't have the number at the top of my head, I don't know if Mr. Reagan knows the cost of that garage.
Do you have the field card for the house?
What is it?
The field card for the house?
Yes, we do.
Is that in the package?
I don't believe it's in our submittal package, no.
Supposed to be, can I have that field card?
I don't see a deed here either.
And that permit for the owner, right? It's not under PNS or nothing, right? So, Dylan, that's for the owner, it's not purchasing or nothing?
This is for the owner of the current lot, yes.
So, you don't have a field card?
I do not have a field card on me at the moment.
All right, well, that's on, you're going to have to provide the building department if that go forward, because if your cost, it depends on the ratio of your cost, you might have to, I don't know, with the house, that's on, you have to take it up with the commissioner, one time come, when you get to that point. Okay, so, as you heard, you need the variance, and if the board feels so not detrimental, we can act on it as a special permit, we can give them a relief on the 1353.
And you're looking for relief on the setback? What is it that we're looking for?
Yeah, it's the setback, yep.
20 feet.
Yep.
And the bylaw calls for 20, and you've got how many?
13, 9.
Yep.
Okay.
13, 9 and 13, 2, however, the house is an existing non-conforming, you could extend it non-conforming.
Yeah, I'm seeing it, I'm getting, I'm kind of, it is kind of hard to see.
I know, here is valid, Jimmy, look at my screen.
Yeah, I've been peeking over and I've been trying to, okay. So, is there an abut to the lot on the side?
To the left.
Yeah, there's an abut.
And they've been notified?
Yep, yep.
And they have the chance to be here and they're not, or we, I don't see anybody yelling and screaming in the back room or-
We'll get to them, let's ask the board first about it. Let's discuss among us, and then we'll go to public. Troy, what do you think of the idea?
I don't really have an issue with it.
Veronica?
I'd like to really be able to see it, this is so small, it's really hard to see, and I don't see a deed here.
Yeah, I have a deed here and an extra copy as well.
Okay, keep looking, Richard, what do you think?
Well, I'm all set at this time.
Jimmy?
Yeah, I'm okay, I think I'm okay, that's, my only concern would be if there's some neighbor that has-
Well, Veronica's looking, is there anyone on the public who wants to speak in favor this matter? Anyone against this matter?
And I have a deed and extra copy here, if anyone would like to see it.
So, I hear, no, anyone on, no? John, Anthony?
You got it, ready for a second?
Nobody waving on Zoom? Okay. There you go, thank you, Ness.
All right, comes in handy, that laptop. All right, very well. So, that being said, what's the wishes? Guys, want to close, what do you want to do?
It doesn't seem anybody's fairly objecting to this, yeah, I move that we close the public portion of this hearing.
Okay, we have a motion to close this hearing, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Rich, all in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
Myself, Nazi aye. On the section 1353, how's the board feel? Do you feel it's detrimental or non-detrimental? Do you wanna act upon it as a special permit or a variance?
I, I move that we act as a special permit, I don't find it detrimental to the neighborhood. If it were, we'd have a bunch of neighbors here telling us.
Any discussion on that? You're none, Troy?
I agree.
Okay, so we have a motion by Jim to act as a special permit, right?
Yep.
Okay, a second, any second on that?
Second.
Second by Troy, all in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
And myself, Nazi aye. Now, on the special permit, what's the wishes?
I'll move that we grant with, of course, with standard conditions.
As planned, drafted by.
I'd like to see, I'd like to see the plans as part of the file.
Right, okay, we'll make a condition as plans. Okay, as plans, as plans drafted by Timothy Bennett on 64, 2023. That's how it has to be built, okay? At quality these plans.
So that may, if I mean, Commissioner, is it, so is the field card gonna change anybody's?
No, that, that will affect his building permit.
That was it, okay, thank you.
For elevations and stuff for.
Thank you.
Zoning, yeah. Okay, do I have a second on Jim's?
I second.
Second by Rich, all in favor on the special permit. Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
And myself, aye, it carries, you're good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So now we can deal with.
Can I keep this one as part of the record? Yeah, yeah, yep.
Okay, Mr. 37-23, John Cook, 25 Lazy Harbor Road.
You guys have a couple things we need to throw in the file before I open up.
Yeah, this is, I think we need to have it with a full application with the deed before.
This is the one we're on.
Yeah, this is, that's the one we just finished.
This goes in the folder.
That's a copy of it.
So many roads in Wareham, I never knew they existed.
Get your copy of the deed.
It's neither, it's neither, near, it's near in Briarwood Beach, it's off Kermit's Off Kermit's neck.
Okay. To his.
Neck, that's all the way down?
Yeah.
Soon to a theater near you.
Preservation Lane is the road before Preservation Lane, around Kermit's Road.
The zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on September 27th, 2023, at 6:30 PM in room 320 of the Wareham Multi Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. 02571, to consider petition number 37-23 for a variance from the requirements of Article 6, Table 625, under the Wareham zoning bylaws to John Cook of 991 Collier Court, Marco Island, Florida, Care of GAF Engineering, Inc. of 266 Main Street, Wareham, Mass., to construct a 25 by 29 two-car garage in the front setback of the principal dwelling location located at 25 Lazy Harbor Road, Wareham, Mass. That appears on Assessors Map 54, Lot 1014, in the R 30 zoning district.
Okay, name and address?
John Cook. I own the property at 25 Lazy Harbor Road.
Bob Rogers, GAF Engineering, on behalf of Mr. Cook, or with Mr. Cook.
Okay, let me guess, you have wetland, you can put the garage in the back?
That's, that's one of the things that I touched upon in my letter dated September 21st.
All right, let's hear it.
Mr. Cook would like to say a few words.
Okay.
I wanna put a 25 by 29 foot garage.
Yeah.
There's only one spot on the property that it can go, it's been approved by conservation already, but it's coming down the driveway off of Lazy Harbor Road, so it's between the house and the end of Lazy Harbor Road.
So your house is on the water, right? That house on the water?
Water.
And apparently you can't put it behind the house, it'd be on the water.
It would be more susceptible to storm damage, it would be closer to the wetland resource areas, it's.
Most of the butters are on the other side of the creek.
So we actually, we comply with the front yard setback, the issue is that we're in front of the principal structure, which is the existing dwelling.
It's the bylaw, our bylaw says the garage has to sit behind, can't be more close to the street than the residence.
Correct, and, and so.
So it's gonna be.
It's got a lot of front yard, it's got a lot of front yard, and, you know, the home was constructed before Mr. Cook bought the property. So he's looking for additional storage and vehicle storage.
That's perfect.
We've had this type of issue multiple times. So we do also have garage plans, which, which we submitted.
Yeah, we saw that in here.
Where's Lazy Harbor Road in the world? Lazy Harbor Road.
See one lot down on Kermit's, on the right? There's only one house on the whole street.
Okay.
And I have a right-of-way.
Okay.
On Kermit's to my house, and I'm on the end of that right-of-way.
Jimmy, look at this, this Preservation Lane, remember the subdivision?
Yeah, that's right next to it.
I just needed to get my head into where it is, you know? I think I know.
Been in and out of the Weebyanic River so many times.
I don't know where it is.
I see where it's tucked in.
It's a Shell driveway, or Shell Road.
As I said, I've been in and out of the Weebyanic River many times, and, and he's just off far enough, he can't even see you in there.
All right, Troy, what do you think?
I don't have a problem.
Monica?
No comment.
Jimmy?
I have no problem with this at all.
Nope.
Anyone on the public in, against this project? In favor first, in favor of this project? I hear none, against, okay? And I feel that that definitely meets statute requirement of a variance, so that being said, do you wanna close? Are you good?
So moved.
Okay, very good, so.
Second.
Second by Rich, all in favor closing? Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
And myself, I close. On the variance, how's the people feel?
Give it to them.
Okay, we have a motion to grant with Jimmy, meets statute requirements, Chapter 40A, Measure on Laws, Section 10, do I have a second on that?
Second.
Second by Troy, all in favor, say aye, Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
And myself, Nazi aye, it carries, thank you, good luck.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
You're welcome, good luck.
We got something to sign here. We might as well get this one signed.
That's a nice drive all the way to that house.
Yeah.
Okay.
I've often wondered, I've gone by the end of that driveway, and often wondered, because you can't see anything down there.
Decency attached.
I mean, that just goes to the part as you're going down.
That looks like 1,200 feet.
Do you need, do you need me to put notes on this, or did you hear enough?
No, it's a variance.
We're signing it.
Patty, just on the variance for, Patty's still doing the things, right? The minutes? On Mr. John Cook, 37-23, on the variance, just write, meets statute requirements, Chapter 40A, Master on Laws, Section 10, with standard conditions. Thank you.
Good, good.
Good.
Okay, any other discussion? Is attorney?
Thank you, you got anything else to bring on your way there?
Schoolhouse, 35-23.
I think I handed it back already, sir.
Okay, thank you.
What is this one?
I see.
35-23, Schoolhouse Rocks LLC.
Hi, everybody.
Hello.
Good evening.
I just wanna get this folder closed before we.
Okay, Ms. Debonese will excuse herself, and this public hearing's still open. Mr. Morrison was here before, Counselor, Mr. Morrison was here when we opened, so he could, under the Malaan Law, he could engage again on next hearing, okay? So name and, name and address for the record, and let us know what you're doing.
Patricia McArdle, 45 Main Street, Matipoiset, Mass.
Okay.
Ernie Debonese, 4 Square Island Road, West Wareham.
All right, let's hear it.
All right, so I purchased the West Wareham School at auction from town last fall. Ernie is one of my partners at Schoolhouse Rocks. So we, it's located in the MR district, which is your multi-residential district. When we purchased this building, it's a, it's sentimental to us, our children went there, we love this building, we love this neighborhood, it's all residential homes, except for the school, the school is like a one-off in this district, was built in the early 1900s. We took this property and the site plan to an architect to see, housing makes the most sense in this building. We brought it to an architect to see what we could put in there. We actually initially requested to see if he could put in 12 units, he came back and said no. He said comfortably, we could put in seven units in this building, it's very large, little deceiving on the outside, there is 4,200 square feet on each level, including a very large expansive attic area, which has about 16 feet in height at its center. Once we had the architectural plans, we went and had a structural engineer come in to confirm that what we were looking to do could be done without demolishing this building, and it could within the footprint of this building. So we're not looking to expand, we're not looking to add on, we're looking to keep within the footprint and keep the character of the exterior. So tonight, what we're asking for in this MR 30 are three things. We're looking for a special permit to allow a use of more than five units, specifically, we're looking for seven. We're also looking for a variance from the area requirements of the zoning bylaw, we actually meet the setbacks, we meet the frontage on the road, we simply don't meet the area of land for this number of units, so we're looking for a variance on that.
What if I, if I may, what's the special permit you're asking for?
That is for under the use, looking for multifamily for more than five units.
You're allowed more than five?
According to your bylaw, and according to the letter from the building department, it said we need to seek a special permit for converting it from the school use to more than five units. So I, it is an allowed use, but we still have to seek and ask for it, because we're changing.
It's allowed by special permit.
Because it's more than five units, it's a special permit?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then finally, there's the site plan, but we're not asking for any decision, because we don't, we're not ready for the site plan at this point. We want to see if the board was open to these seven units under the variance and the special permit, so that's what we're asking for, your feedback and a decision today. So under, for these special permit and the variance, you have those four statutory requirements that you were alluding to earlier in a different hearing, and this building by itself is a, just the condition of the building, the size, the sheer volume of this building, this is a hardship all by itself. This was something that was not financially feasible for the town to develop, and so therefore, they actually put it up for auction to have somebody help them, and to do something special for it, to maintain the value of this building, and to keep, hopefully keep it in the character, they didn't put a restriction on it, but I think that was the sentiment. And we've been to many boards, including the CPC, everybody's kind of in favor of us keeping the exterior of the building the way it is, keep parking in the back, but creating some residential units, which clearly is in conformity with the neighborhood. When we purchased the building, I think it's important to note, when you go to an auction, it's a little different than when you go under a standard purchase and sale agreement under a regular residential transaction, there's no inspection period, there's no due diligence, you get two hours to walk through, you don't get to test anything, you don't get to disturb anything, and then a couple hours later, you're at auction with your $5,000 deposit check. So we went in, we were able to see what the building was, but we weren't able to test and find all the hiccups that are in the building, and so that's ultimately what we've been doing, is our due diligence to figure out what we could do. Obviously, this is a big financial undertaking, where this is a historic building that has asbestos tiles in the, in the school, there's lead paint in the trim, et cetera, the septic system, not up to code, the sprinkler system, although it's larger in volume than we might need, it's not actually to current code for residential, so all those things would have to be updated, and so looking at the large picture, the hardship just kinda kept on coming, so. So there is no detriment to the neighborhood, which is part of the standard you have to look at, because we're looking to do something, again, it was a school, it was a one-off in the middle of a residential neighborhood, we have a pond, so we have some of those resource areas that we have to consider when we go forward with the site plan, and to have seven residential units, we have plenty of parking that's already there currently, in fact, we're probably gonna pull it back a little bit, because there's probably more than we actually need there on site, but we'll talk about that site plan. The intent of this bylaw, why you require to have this additional square footage in the land per unit is what you actually require, is because the town doesn't want the additional building sprawl, they don't want it taking up the additional open space. Here, we have a very unique situation, this building has been here since the early 1900s, we're not expanding it, we're asking to develop within the footprint, so we are not undermining the intent of this bylaw, in fact, I would suggest that we're actually complying with it, and doing something very special and preserving the history of this neighborhood and adding additional value. If anybody's driven by, it looks a little unkept, and we'd like to turn that around.
If I may?
Yeah.
The 800 square feet units, how much living space? If you take the bathrooms, closets, and hallway, how much would be left with?
That, well, we have 1,500 square feet for each unit, so that's four units, that's six.
No, no, the 800 ones.
Oh, the 800 ones? That one, I'm not sure.
You take the bathrooms out, and you take the hallway and closet, what he leaves you with?
To be honest, I didn't do that math, so I'm not sure.
Still around 500 at least, I would say, if not more.
I think it's gotta at least be 600.
Yeah, at least 600, I would say, yeah.
What commission, 650 you need?
650.
You need to end up with 650.
Okay, I mean, we can modify those plans, absolutely, we wanna ban.
Excluding the, you gotta exclude closets, hallway, and bathroom, and you gotta end up, you have to have 650.
Mr. Chairman?
Five units and over, yes?
I don't have my notes on that, but I believe I asked the applicant for that information, so that's why it's not cited on the denial letter.
It looks like they might be, they might be in there already, they might be.
Can't say for sure, I don't have those notes with me, but I think I did check that. I'd have to look at it.
Okay.
And that's, we certainly have to comply with all building codes when we get to the point of actually building it out, so there's no problem there, and there's additional space that we have.
It's not a building code, it's a zoning.
Zoning, oh.
That's not a building code.
Thought that was a building code.
No, building code will, will be the commission, like.
But we certainly don't want to be in violation of zoning either.
Yeah, that's a zoning violation, so over five units, you have to have 650 clear.
Okay.
So you gotta have your architect mark it.
Absolutely.
Otherwise, you're gonna have to scavenge it from different units. All right, that being heard, Troy, what do you think?
I like it.
You like it? Jimmy?
I'd like to see the building used, I'd like to see, you know, for historical, I mean historical nuts, I'd like to see the history maintained, and.
You're making me look bad now. Taking me look bad that I took the house down.
No, that, that monster that you tore down was, was hysterical, I walked through it before, and so there was no saving that one. That'd be like saving the old Tilby Homestead, that was nothing but a fire looking for it, for time to happen.
And they end up taking it down.
But, huh?
How many, how many?
All that money they put in it, and it's still to get down.
I know, they could, it would've been easier to just burn the money.
Yeah?
It would've, it would've. Anyway, my question, the attic, 16-foot ceilings in the attic, is that gonna be part of the?
Yeah, so part of the plan is to actually dormer on each, because it's.
Rip the roof open and make it even, yeah.
Correct, yep.
All right, so.
So how the units would go.
There's not gonna be an elevator, it's not gonna be ADA.
No. So there's, there's four--
No handicap ramp going to the third floor.
To the third floor, no. There is a handicap ramp, a handicap ramp on the front of the building right now.
Existing, yeah, sure, sure.
Yeah, exactly. But, so there's the four schoolrooms, and then the plan is to then make the bedrooms upstairs on top of each of those schoolrooms. So you would have like the--
So you're going to townhouse--
Correct.
Okay, you're going to townhouse within the footprint, and then go on top of that with the third story.
So then the, then the basement would be where the three other units would be. And then, so the plan, it's very high ceilings in the basement, surprisingly so.
Yeah, they'd be in the building.
Oh, yeah. It's, it's amazing every time we go in there. So, so we'd be able to fit those in there, and obviously, create, open up some of the windows, make sure it's all to code, but also to bring in the light and make sure it doesn't feel like a basement because--
Cool.
Nobody wants that.
All right, that's, no, I wish you luck with the project. We just got to keep working through it.
When you mentioned burning the money, that was--
Yeah, oh, no, you're gonna, you know, you're gonna--
We're on the fence.
What, what do you think?
Burn the money, do the project.
I know a guy that was going to restore a building for 50 grand. He's into it for 500,000 so far, and he's not halfway there.
You need to stop telling me these stories.
Whatever you thought of, multiply it by 10.
I'm good with as it's presented, but I mean, excuse me, a backup, not as it's presented, but with the discussion that we need to see it come close to the 650.
Right. We need, what they're here for today, if we're okay with the variance--
We're okay with seven.
They got to go for full site--
They don't want to draw the plans for seven and have us say that you can only have five.
Site plan, all these things.
And they have to have 12.
And they, they also brought up a good point, being how many units, in fact, that it's only in a single building instead of a sprawl, so.
Yeah.
All right, so you're looking to see, if we grant you the variance, you go ahead and do the site plan, the architect, all that, spend all that money.
Yep, that's the next step.
All right, anyone on the public want to speak in favor of this project? Anyone against? George, no against? You're not a neighbor there?
I'm not a neighbor to this one.
You're not?
Forever.
I thought that was where your summer home was going to be.
By the pond?
So--
A pond.
Yeah, right. I'd grant the variance, but I'd want it to be subject to approval of the final plans.
I mean, if you give the vans, they're going to come--
They're going to have to draw the plans, yeah, okay. Then they got to do the special permit. Never mind. I'm overthinking it. It's only eight--
Actually, no, I agree. We will grant, I will personally, I'm okay to give a variance subject to site plan and architecture, our final, yeah. Because they could take just that variance and sell it to a Josh Moore, and then all of a sudden, he comes, slaps it together.
Yeah, yeah. That's, that was what my concern--
Thank you for overthinking, Mr. Akabachi.
No, that's, that's a good thinking. All right. That being said, let's close it.
So moved.
Okay, we have motion to close.
Second?
Okay, we have second by Rich. All in favor to close this hearing?
Mr. Chair, may I--
Yes.
So we're closing the hearing on the variance and the special permit--
We just closed the variance portion of it. We didn't elaborate.
Yes, exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Special permit is still your burden.
The site plan.
The site plan.
The site plan, right.
Site plan, yeah.
Okay. Site plan and, and the special permit has to confirm with the footage.
Correct.
All right. Okay, so we have a motion by Jim, second by Rich. All in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Is that to close or the--
That's a public hearing, right?
That's just closing the public. That was just closing--
Okay, closing, sorry, I got distracted.
No, no more talking about the variance. It's a done deal.
All right. So motion--
You got seven. Now you got to show us how you're going to get them.
So, did we--
Fingers crossed.
Hold on. Did we vote to, did we vote to close?
No, we voted, we just closed the public. Now we got to say--
Oh, yeah, okay, okay. I'm going to lose.
Close the public, but we have--
I'm losing. I thought you were watching us here.
She's watching. She's in awe. She's speechless.
You're supposed to correct us.
So now, now that we've passed the, now that we've closed the public hearing, I move that we grant a special, a variance for seven units on the site.
Subject to the final--
Subject to, yeah, exactly.
Final site plan review and special permit. Okay. All in favor, I mean, gee, I'm tired. Can I have a second on Jim's motion?
Second.
Second by Troy. Any discussion on that before we go forward?
Good.
I hear nothing. So all in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
And myself, aye. It carries. Good luck. Go to work. Your variance is only good for a year, so you got to go do all your work. No extension.
Clock's ticking.
And so I, can I just ask for clarification? So the variance, that, so that was for the reduction of the area.
Yes.
So as far as the allowed use for five or above, do you need a special, another vote for that, for the special permit for the allowed use of five or more units?
I think we just--
We just did--
I think they just said yes.
Both, on both.
If you feel you need it, we'll revote it.
Okay, nope.
Love to vote after the fact.
I appreciate it. I don't want to push my--
Now, the variance would die if you don't come up with special permit with the site--
Site plan, yeah.
You'd think that--
That understood.
I would assume that the clock ticking on the variance would click when we finish with the--
Yeah, especially--
Site plan review.
Right. Now, once we give you site plan review, you get two, two years to construct.
Right.
You know, however, the variance is one year.
Correct.
So it's a catch 21.
All right.
Yeah. Well, I'm hoping interest rates come down by the time we get site plan done.
You got to get that site plan approved within a year, and then go down there and dig, you know, make mud pies in the yard or something.
Yeah, you got to start working on it.
So they, they will be back within 60 days for the special permit end of it?
No, they don't need 60. They, they could come in six months. They, they need a lot of work.
Within a year, yeah.
They have a lot of work to do.
We need to get cracking, yeah.
Yeah. So you apply now for a special permit, site plan. I mean, site plan.
Site plan, yeah.
All right, very well. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Anything else before we adjourn? You're welcome.
I think he wants to talk about the rules.
Yeah, rules. Let's talk about the rules. Have a good night.
You too. Thank you.
Okay, let's talk about the rules.
The rules.
I believe what was said was that if we wanted to make any changes, and I--
You know, the problem is I haven't reviewed them. Well, I get from-- The gist of what I've heard is that basically, the planning board wrote these rules, and what they want is more stuff to go in front of them unless it's a zone, unless it's a variant or an easement. They want more of these permits going through the planning board rather than zoning board. That's the way I, that's the way I interpreted the changing rules.
That isn't quite accurate. Maybe I can explain.
You want to explain it?
Yeah, sure. I'd be happy to. What, what happened was the Articles 14 and 15, the administration and the site plan review sections of the zoning bylaws were hurting a little bit and needed to be rewritten. So the planning board took that on, rewrote Article 15, the site plan review. And in doing that, what we did was we took out all the sections that are related to administration, which are the, how many plans that you need to file, and what has to be shown on the plans, and the fees, those, those kinds of things, which worked well for rules and regulations because you can waive them. You don't have to, you don't have to get, you don't have to go get a variance if you're only submitting 10 copies of plans instead of 13, like it says in the bylaw. So it helps a lot in, in the administration of the, of the, of the permit applications coming before the board. But one thing they didn't do in the, in the bylaw change or the rules and regulations was to change when the Board of Appeals takes responsibility for a site plan review. It's still, we're still looking at a more efficient way of doing it, whereas instead of going to two boards, you go to one board. If you have a variance or a special permit that the Board of Appeals has to issue, then the site plan review is done by the Board of Appeals, and it's still the same as it was before. There's been no change in that. But what you'll want to consider is that since the administrative functions have been taken out of Article 15, you'll probably want to have your own rules and regulations that you'll adopt and file with the town clerk and have available so you can control what happens when an application comes in on a site plan review. This, it takes a public hearing and filing with the town clerk, and then it becomes a fact of a rule of, of control on the applications that come in. So it's to your advantage to adopt rules and regulations.
So they're taking it out, and we want to put our own in, is what I'm getting at?
Right. And what I did was, what I did--
Why would what?
Just take the, the sections out of Article 15 and put them into the rules and regulations that the planning board did. So you could take the planning board's rules and regulations if you want, and it's, it's just the same as what was in the Article 15 before. It's just in the rules and regulations now instead, and you could adopt that and have that as your own rules and regulations.
So you wouldn't be taking any less of our deciding points away. It would just be a matter of us coming up with our own, like you said, adopting some new rules and regulations.
That's correct. Yeah, it doesn't take anything away from the board. It's what you, what you do now for review.
Thank you.
What do you think, guys?
I haven't read the, these rules and regulations. I have, I got to be honest. I usually get on top of this stuff. I haven't even looked at them.
So we bring this back up in the next meeting? Do we have, when's the meeting, when's the town meeting?
October 23rd.
October 23rd, so we'll be back in before that, right?
So, Ken, so let's say we want to make changes. Does it make it to the town meeting? Would it make it, would it make the warrant?
It doesn't have to go in the warrant. It's, for the rules and regulations, it's just a public hearing before you, the board, and you file with the town clerk, and they're all yours.
So what's going in front of the town meeting?
Town meeting has a zone change where Article 15 and Article 14 have been rewritten. So they become a permit guide, essentially, with the permits and the boards listed and the criteria for approval.
So 14 and 15 have to be looked at as to how they're read, written now, and how they'll be written after the town meeting. That's what we're really, rules and regulations seem, sound to me to be moot to this conversation. I think the thing we should be concerned with is, what is 14, what is it, what, 14 and 15?
Correct.
There's where the, there's where the change is happening, right?
That's where the important changes are happening, yes.
So we need to check out 14 and 15?
Yes, you do.
Okay. Homework for our next meeting.
And I have some comments about some other things that have gone on throughout some of our meetings that we talked about, perhaps having some changes made. I know we talked about animal-related uses, we've interned riding stables. That was a big thing then when it came up with the, you know, the applicant that was before, it's before and--
Ponies for--
Yeah, piece for ponies.
Ponies or phonies or whatever it was.
So I don't, I don't know specifically, but I know that we talked about wanting to take a look at that and maybe, you know, tighten up on the wording there or something.
But I don't think we have time to get anything in front of this--
Until next time, the April one.
All right. Well, there's a couple other things. So the other thing is, in the bylaw, it talks about new use of parking spaces for commercial, excludes parking for residential requirements. I'm not sure, I'm not sure exactly what that's getting at, but, but isn't there something in the bylaw about regardless of how many are existing, you need 10? What's the thing with the 10? We wanted the--
Site plan, over nine cars, you need a site plan.
No, no, not that one. If you make a change or you do something regardless of what's existing, you have to--
Do a site plan review when you have over nine cars, right?
That's right. If you have over nine cars, regardless of how many are existing on the site, if the, if the new use demands nine, 10 car spaces, parking spaces, then you have to go through site plan review.
Okay, I didn't think that that wording was in there, if the new use demands it. I think that's what was missing.
I'll check that and see.
You know, I, I personally think there should be a site plan. Say you have a hair salon, anything, eight cars, anything. It should be some landscape and some drainage, some stuff. I don't, that thing, that's such an old bylaw, it should change.
You don't think it puts a burden on small business, though, that doesn't really have a whole, I think that puts a little bit of a burden on--
It's just, I mean, could be a mini site plan versus major site plan.
Yeah.
Because you could literally just go pave it and, or not pave it, don't even pave it. Start parking cars, start doing business.
There are a couple, I have two other things on here. One was a notification for businesses to include all parcels, the lots of the business. For instance, what happened at onset, when they were themselves the abutter to where they were making the change on their lot, right? So that none of the neighbors actually that live there were notified because they owned the lot surrounding where they were making the change.
You could put that into the rules and regulations. That's something that you could put into the rules and regulations and have it applied to any future application.
So is that something that you're saying, Ken, is, I mean, is that something that's doable to make a change coming up?
It is. You could do that by, all by yourselves, without going to town meeting.
Okay. I didn't know that.
That's what, that's what the cool thing is about rules and regulations. They're your own, your own content, and all you need is a public hearing to, to get them established and file it with the town clerk, and then they, they have the effect of law. But you can waive them if you want as well, too. You can, you can say it's not necessary in some instances and not have to go through a public hearing to do that.
So that's, I mean, I guess that would be, I mean, we could make it at some other time, but I think it's something that we should put on our agenda to talk about and vote on, maybe.
Well, I believe that we should keep it at the end of, like, at the end of the meeting and keep this discussion going. I mean, let's not just push it off. Let's get, even if it's going to be whenever, at least we can get it covered, get our changes. If we start now, we'll cover everything. If we don't, we just wait and do a hurry-up, like, get all information before a meeting. It's kind of tough for us to make decisions. So I think if we just pick away at it each meeting.
So this, what came to you that you printed a copy of so diligently, that's the rules and regulations for the planning board or the rules and regulations for planning and zoning? What is that, who's, Ken, can you tell me who that pertains to?
I, I printed out what Kent, Kent in the beginning, probably a month ago.
Yeah.
He texted out, said that we should talk about it. So I printed out what he had sent us. Now there's a revised email. When I went through, there were some corrections made that I would thought, so they refreshedened it up. So now you can have it. It's--
So those are the rules and regulations. I guess my question is--
This is the draft of 823.
It's of the planning board's, it's the planning board's rules and regulations at this point.
Planning board's rules and regulations. So zoning board's rules and regulations are not impacted, and what we should be figuring out is, do we want any rules and regulations for ourselves, or do we want to remain unruly?
That's right. What, what happens is in the, in the, in the bylaw, the way it's been written now, and what you've always had under Article 15, is the administrative functions and the requirements have been included in the bylaw. But that's problematic because, like I say, if somebody doesn't have a plan stamped by a landscape architect, it's a variance if they, under the zoning bylaw, if they don't include that, and they have to go for a public hearing to do, to do something different. If it was just a rules and, under the rules and regulations, you could waive that requirement without having to have a special hearing.
So it actually would be providing some relief to some would-be applicants. Is that what, is that, is that, in short, if somebody has a, if somebody has an A and R lot, they got to get, it, it says A and R, approval not required, but they can't do diddly with it until the planning board approves it. So we have a lot that has no requirement for approval waiting to be approved. Is that about right? Sounds like an oxymoron to me.
Yeah, that's, that's the essence of it.
If approval's, I'm just trying to figure out how these rules and regulations work. It says A and R, approval not required. Now we need somebody's approval for it to be not required.
That's right. You need endorsement by the planning board to say that it's not a subdivision. It's when you subdivide the property and you have frontage on an existing way, then you're allowed to get an endorsement by the planning board to say the subdivision process is not necessary to, to subdivide it.
But the whole--
Everything's fine as is.
That's the planning board, and I'm not trying to decide what the planning board should or shouldn't do. I'm just trying to see what the zoning board of appeals, what rules, because it's going to, I guess what we need to do is read 14 and 15 and come up. I just would like it when there's something simple. When somebody has-- just would like it when there's something simple, when somebody has a very simple thing that just needs kinda be, kinda to be rubber stamped. I hate to see somebody that's willing to invest in the town of Wareham, to have to come and spend $750 for an application, and then wait for their turn to get in front of a board, and then have the board poke them with sharp sticks, and all they really need is a rubber stamp on something, they could come in and have you or Sonya or somebody else in that office in the town hall on a regular basis say, "Yeah, sure, here you go, thanks for your plan, we'll put it on the file." But instead, it takes days, weeks, months, years, for somebody to get something that's, should be just approved. So yeah, we should look at our rules and regulations.
So do we ever, we can discuss this through emails amongst ourselves, it's not gonna jeopardize any ruling?
Good question. Does this have to all be discussed in?
I think what I recommend is that I put together a draft for you, rules and regulations to consider, and all your, all your own, and you can discuss it at the next board meeting.
Good idea, good, great idea.
Okay.
Thank you.
And then, so one other thing, I don't know if this is, this is separate, storage of vehicles with motors have provisions for gas or oil spills, like, for example, boats. That's not something, I don't think that's, I don't know if that's building, but I don't, I think that that was something that was discussed, that there are no current provisions for that, and there should be.
Remediation, mitigation or emergency response, is that what you're talking about?
Not necessarily emergency response, but if someone is storing boats or, and they're working on boats or whatever, if they're providing a storage service, they should have a provision for gas and oil spills. And I don't, yeah, maybe, maybe a response, maybe, I don't know, like, what they should be doing when they work on them, or what their response should be if something spills, I don't know, like, you know, with drainage for larger facilities that do it, but.
I think they should have some rules about tanks before boats.
Before what?
Like fuel tanks, for instance, like the mariners, they have like 20, 30,000 gallon tanks sticking out of the ground, just sitting right there by the ocean.
They gotta be licensed and permitted and.
I know they are, but, I mean, you're gonna worry about boats while you have huge tanks. I mean, if one boat leaks, how many gallons it's got, versus you have 20,000 gallons sticking out of the ground, that's crazy, it's crazy, that, but.
I'm bringing up things that I know as the, as whole, the board did discuss, these are not things that I'm just pulling up.
Right, right.
I'm making, you've got a list, I'm making the list of your list.
Are you checking it twice?
I'm not checking it, I'm just listing, man.
So you're saying if there's a boat yard, there should be some.
Well, she's talking, if somebody decides they wanna have a business in their yard and start working on these things, I agree, I mean, all ground is fragile, you can't be just spilling oil, and quite frankly, I've seen some of the places and people working on it, and there's not quite much care given on where all the fuel and the oil goes.
You put it down the storm drain.
This is pretty much what I've seen, so, and it's disgusting to think that, you know, people actually feel that that's okay to do.
And what are the requirements for, like, boat yards, when they are actively working on boats? Where are they, are they just working on them in the yard, or do they bring them to a specific area? What are they putting underneath them to, while they're working?
Right.
You know, portable.
Well, I think, I think a boat yard is a boat yard, and they get regulated, I, I don't know, maybe I'm missing hearing what, I think, what I'm hearing is a concern about Joe Schmo who brings his boat home and starts working in the backyard and makes a big muddy mess out of his oil and takes his engine apart and.
Well, I'll add, the Bowman's, I believe, over there, across from Rochester School, they got a complete facility of working on boats and motors and everything, and it's.
Bowman's.
It's over in Rochester, Marion?
Marion, you mean.
Matipoy.
Over where we used to go to.
Put it this way, I went and got some pots off of it, and they got a full-blown thing going in the backyard of their house, I mean, they've been working on boats for years down there. Whether they contain everything the way they should or shouldn't, I think this is what she's talking to, if somebody's gonna open up a business and be working on it, I'm not talking about some guy working on his own building, I mean, if somebody comes to, to open up a business, I mean, there needs to be some precautions given.
Yeah, but, I would think that if they're looking to open up a business, then we have precautions in place.
Well, that's why we oughta look at it.
I would think, you know, we have.
It's brought up because I believe that there are not, I mean, I know that we came up with, something came before us and this was, I don't know, could have been a year ago.
We have, we have oil change places that are supposed to be holding the oil and turning them in and everything else, I just haven't heard it from anybody as far as the backyard grease monkeys or things like that, I mean, they come in and they wanna start working on vehicles, on boats or anything, I mean, I know that we, we do that for the oil changes, but it hasn't ever really come through as boat, working on boats and motors, and let me tell you, that's a, that's a sloppy mess when they get working on those things. But anyway, we'll work on it.
I guess, here that is a kind of concern, I just don't, I'm not clear on what the concern is.
Well, that's, that's why we need a little bit of time and we'll kick it around.
Yep. What else? You got your list, you're checking it, you're on your.
Some of this other stuff was already taken care of, building coverage, oh, the towing, did we decide what, what zone, towing is industrial now, right?
It's in that, but it comes with a garage license, if you have all the repair, you can have towing. We wanted to discuss a barn size.
Shed size, I thought that was already done, that hasn't been determined.
There was supposed to be some changes to that, we were gonna be raising the limit on the accessory building, I think we were at 20 or something, and didn't it go up higher?
The height?
The height?
Oh, the height you're talking about.
Right, but we wanted to shrink the size, right now you could have 10,000 square.
Yeah, unlimited size on residential lot for.
It's set at 900 square feet.
Right now, you can only have a barn 900 square feet, right? Oh, that's good.
Yeah.
Otherwise, you need a variance or a special.
Correct.
30 by 30, yeah.
So that changed, right, that's a change, right? Because it was, I thought it had already been changed, because that is on here now, but I thought it was already done.
Oh, that's good.
Because we approved.
Our 130 had a 50-foot setback, that was, we thought it was too much, did that get changed?
They did, with lots under 15,000, yeah.
And then, commercial general, ad units at 1,000, mixed use.
I think under 15,000 is like 10, 20, I think it did change, yeah.
And then there was building coverage FAR and the parking space review, motor vehicles 10 or more regardless of what the wording, that's the first thing that I started with, so I think that's where it started.
So what's, what's the gig on that? So, under our current bylaw, if we add a garage to our house, it can be as tall as our house, is that correct?
No, right now, 900 square feet, that's it.
I'm talking about the height.
Height.
The height, yeah, the height, yes.
If it's added, if it's attached, it can be.
It'd be higher, 35.
But if it's detached, it can only be 20 feet or something like that, is that?
No, I think.
So attached, you can be as big as you like.
Right, but if it's detached, is there a height?
900 square feet.
What is it?
900 square feet.
900 square feet.
What's the height?
Footprint or per floor or?
20 feet for the height, I thought. On the bigger lots, the building, the accessory building can go to 35 feet, which is building.
In height?
In height, on the smaller lots, it stayed at 20 feet.
Okay, when you say on the small lots, you mean in the zoning district of the, like the, or just the, under the current zoning, small, undersized lot?
For lots, 10,000 square feet near and under, the limit shall be side five, rear five, and height 20. Building height shall be determined in accordance with latest state building code.
But if it's over 10,000 square feet?
It could go up.
What, it can go up to 35?
Correct.
Oh.
3,500 square feet.
35 feet.
35 a height.
The height.
Heightened, right.
How tall it can be.
Maximum size is 30 by 30 or 900 square feet.
I should have did my barn when I was, I wanted to do 15, 1500 feet back then, I thought it was big anyway, I didn't do it.
You were hot to trot on making the change.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Yeah, sure.
Go ahead, I'll check it.
I make a motion to adjourn this meeting tonight.
Second.